I would ask Vice President Zach and everyone else to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice President Zach.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, the invisible of liberty and justice for all.
Member Gilbo, the Board Affirmation Statement.
Okay, our mission is to empower all learners to be college and career-ready and to develop, grow, and achieve as productive citizens.
Dr. Mitchum, the Agenda.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to ask that the Board approve the Agenda as presented.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, ayes have it. Mr. Gazzafi, Treasurers Report.
Asking approval tonight for the monthly report from July. We've got interim obligation payments totaling $7,694,913.83, also including a debt service payment totaling $3,253,293.14.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion on the Treasurers Report? Hearing none, seeing none, a roll call vote would be in order, Madam Clerk.
Member Carlson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Peril?
Sheila.
Oh, I'm sorry. Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President Zach?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Treasurers Zach's Report 5.2 is the Schedule of Bills for the month of August. There are six funds, the biggest being the site in construction, which is over $3 million. Total bills payable for the month, $4,946,896.30 for your approval.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Carlson?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President Zach?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Hey, can you guys turn these speakers up here up a little bit? I can hear myself, but I can't really hear others. Thank you.
Moving on, we've got summary of investments, the property taxes received, and the state funding update. We don't have the student trust account. We're shooting to have those for you at our very next meeting with the start of school. The schools did not get those to us in time for adequate review. State funding update, we're $2.5 million owed, about 43 days outstanding, just about where we were at this time last year, so.
Great. Moving down the Agenda, Liaison Reports. Any and all from my left. Any and all from my right. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over. Number six, Consent Agenda. Dr. Mitchum.
Yes, Mr. Quigley, I'd like to ask that the Board approve the Consent Agenda items, 6-1 through 6-6, 6-1 Board Meeting Minutes, 7/22/19, 6-2 Executive Session Meeting Minutes, 7/22/19, 6-3 Board Meeting Minutes, 7/26/19, 6-4 Executive Session Meeting Minutes, 7/26/19, 6-5 Student Activity Contract with Beverly Skoff Elementary and Jane Adams Middle School with Scholastic Book Fairs, and 6-6 Approval of Request to Continue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Carlson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President Zach?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Liaison Reports, from my left, from my right. Hearing none, seeing none. Audience
participation, anybody who wishes to address the Board this evening, please step forward and state your name and where you're from if you want.
I'm Teresa Carrillo. I live in Bolingbrook, Illinois, and I came last board meeting. I just wanted to first of all personally thank the Board and Dr. Mitchum and Assistant Dr. Kinder for listening to me last board meeting about the questions I had concerning AP and the unwaiting and waiting of GPA and College Board. Thank you. When I got home that night, I said to my husband, "They really listened to me," and I do appreciate that as a stakeholder, as a parent, as a taxpayer. Mr. Herter did call me a few days later and answered some of my questions through phone, and this evening he did send me another text saying that he was going to make a presentation tonight that did answer numerous of my questions, or a number of my questions anyway. And I just had a chance to look through it, I was driving my child home from work, but, and I just want to be clear, AP does have merit, and AP is a positive program, but we just want to make sure that we are not, we're only telling half the story. We need to make sure that parents clearly understand that it does affect their financial aid, and some parents are unaware of that. They think that if they're taking the classes as AP in high school, they still have all of their 96 credits in their FAFSA. That is not true, okay? It does count against that, so that needs to be thoroughly researched and thoroughly communicated. When I did attend registration at my high school, the communication I think was better. There was a stack of papers when you went to pay your fee at the fee station that stated that you did not have to pay AP exams today, and then at the bottom it was encouraging parents to look at AP scholarships that this district offers. So I just want to say thank you. I do feel like steps are moving in the right direction. I will tell you, boots on the ground, all the parents are standing in line for registration, you know, we're kind of all in this together, and the person at the station next to me was telling them, "Wow, I'm writing a check for over $1,000. I've bounced checks trying to register my students. These AP exams are high." And I said, "Wait, wait, 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 you don't have to pay all that." I was trying to show the flyer to this lady and hand it to her. She's like, "Well, I already wrote my check." So I do think steps have been made in the right direction. I think it needs just to continue on, but thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Any others?
On it now.
Go ahead.
So we do want to thank you for your feedback and suggestions. I did share responses with the Board this evening, and Mr. Herter did share that with you as well. So it's definitely a part of the continued conversation to improve so that there's support all around for students and parents, and you bring, raise very valid points and things that both high school teams have been working to address, not only just the course offerings and supporting teachers and students, but also in supporting parents and supporting students as part of their post-secondary transition and pathway, so that they do have the full story. So we do thank you for your feedback, and we encourage you to continue to be a part of the dialogue and conversation because it will benefit all of our students and all of our families. We do have the detailed responses to the questions, concerns, and feedback that was raised at the last board meeting that we will make publicly available, and we did share with the Board as well. And again, like I said, there are some issues that you raised that are part of this year's planning and were addressed immediately, and then there are others that are longer term but are works in progress, and then there's others like the advocacy at the state and national level that is definitely a work in progress but something that is also on our radar, even though we don't have, you know, local control over much of that. So thank you, we really do value your time just to come out two weeks ago and again this evening. It does show how much you care, as all of our parents do, and we encourage you to continue to be partner in this, and we'll do absolutely the best we can for our kids and make sure they're on the right pathway and have the right experiences to prepare them for that transition. Thank you.
Moving down the Agenda, unless there's any others, no. Action Reports, Dr. Mitchum, doesn't look like you have anything this evening. Ms. Kinder, Psychology Textbook Adoption.
Yes, that is me. Action Report 10.1, we are seeking your approval this evening for high school standard psychology textbook resource. This includes the purchase of psychology eight-year print as well as the digital premium student resource package with the Channel One text. The information report that was presented at the last board meeting included the background, rationale, the process, and the criteria for selection that was presented at the July 22nd board meeting. We have a team of teachers who did the thorough research and planning for this proposal this evening, and we are seeking your approval for a funding of $26,881 approximately to purchase this resource for this course.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, a roll call vote.
I do, I have something I want to say. I have a feeling this will pass, and I'm really happy if it does, and I hope if it does pass that people are encouraged in the classroom to let us know if they need resources and for the Board to continue to make sure that the classrooms have the resources that they need whenever they need that. Thank you.
Absolutely. I would encourage any educator who feels they don't have adequate resources anywhere, at any level, to please contact me personally, and we will make sure that we address that. I feel very confident that our teachers are supported and have resources, but we're absolutely open to providing other supports if needed.
Motion second, roll call, vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Carlson?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President Zach?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Mr. Gazzafi, Tentative Budget for 2019, 20, 2019 and 2020.
Lot of information contained in the packet. I'll try to just hit the highlights here tonight. Overall budget, just short of $318 million. Operating budget, just under $260 million. The difference there is the overall budget would include all of our capital outlays such as our projects at many of our schools, as well as the cost of servicing our outstanding debt. On the revenue side, we've incorporated 1.9% increase in the tax levy, which represents the CPI or Consumer Price Index. Corporate personal property replacement tax is expected to increase 1.47 million more than last year, so that's a good thing. That's the estimate provided by the Illinois Department of Revenue, and I think that's an indication of the uptick in the economy. Also, an increase of 1.47 million in evidence-based tier funding from the state. Not only are we receiving more money, but we're being held harmless from the prior years, which means we never will go backwards. So any increase in funding, as long as the state honors its commitment under evidence-based funding, will keep, will stay at that level. And so right now, we're at just under $48 million. Last year, I conveyed to you that we were at 66% of adequacy. With this increase in funding, the state has us at 68%. So we remain in Tier Two, 65 and under is considered Tier One. Those are the districts most in need, so we're three percentage points above Tier One or 68% Tier Two. On the federal side, little to no change in all of our Title Funds, Title I, II, III, and IV, National School Lunch and Breakfast Programs, the idea flow through Perkins Money, which is the vocational dollars, as well as the Medicaid outreach. On the expense side, we're increasing salaries based on the collectively bargain agreements we have with all of our staff. Benefits are budgeted for an increase of 6.4% in claims and fixed costs. There's a new requirement known as GASB S-84, Government Accounting Standards Board S-84. So the trust accounts that the Board sees each month collectively total about $2.35 million from all of our buildings. And this requirement now has us, including those revenues and expenditures, lump sum in our budget. So it expands our dollars, our budget by that amount of money, $2.3 million. Obviously, we don't spend that money as a Board, the schools really do, but there is a fiduciary responsibility on the Board to make sure that those dollars are spent in an appropriate fashion. So I think that's the impetus behind that. So that is a change. We increased outside placement tuition by $250,000 based on last year's actuals. Our scheduled debt service payment increased by just under $4 million. We've included $180,000 to replace the antiquated driver's ed simulators. We've got $13 million included in our capital projects fund, and we'll, you'll see a presentation a little bit later tonight to support that. We've incorporated a new technology lease, an additional technology lease, moving that cycle from what would be the new fiscal year into this fiscal year. That added $4 million in new proceeds and an annual service payment of $1 million. Because we bring those action reports to you typically in March, April, May, items are ordered, and with school ending now at the very end of May, it doesn't make sense to order that stuff, wait to receive it in June, and then pay the vendors in July. They certainly don't want to wait for their money. So as soon as the Board approves those technology purchases, those orders are placed, and once school ends, we can, we can receive the, receive the equipment, inventory it, prep it, and make sure it's ready to go when the teachers come back, or if it just needs to go in some of the IDF's and MDF's in the schools, that stuff can be deployed as quickly as possible. We've also got the high-speed production copier to support additional in-house printing. You'll receive an information report later on, but we want to incorporate that expenditure in the budget. And lastly, a purchase of the mobile classrooms, which will be an action item here in just a few minutes. Overall, I'm happy to say that this is a balanced budget. I've not been able to report that to the Board and to the community in a very, very long time. And so I think with the hold harmless component of state funding, as well as the additional tier funding, the evidence-based funding that the state is putting forward, along with the increase in property values, we're able to match expenditures to revenues. And so that is, that is a really, really positive step for Valley View. I'm projecting a year-end balance at 116 days of reserves. That's about as, as good as we've had it. I think last year, we were at 102 days projected. And so again, good news on the, on the financial front. At this time, I am recommending approval of the 1920 Tentative Budget to put on display and make available for public inspection for at least 30 days. We will hold a public hearing on the budget at the September 23rd board meeting, at which final, at which time final adoption would be recommended.
Anybody got any questions on the front end, or Liz?
No. I do. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a motion for first.
Oh, yeah, I need a motion to?
So moved.
Motion, second. Now questions.
Now questions. Exhibit D, I'm looking at, 10-year fund balance history. And I'm looking at the TORT. Can you explain what the TORT fund is for, for, for me, Gary?
Primary expenditures in TORT would be your unemployment compensation, your workers' compensation, and your general liability coverages, property, auto, things of that nature. Those would be your three primary expenditures in the TORT fund.
Okay, because I'm looking at 2010, and we had $2,730, and then for about three years, actually, you could even go, no, I would say probably three years. 2010, 11, and 12, we were below $10,000, and actually, the two years, we were below $5,000, but now we're almost at $100,000 for TORT expenses.
These are balanced, these would be year-end balances.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the difference is from early days until now.
Certainly, I've got to believe that our expenditures were less back in 2010 as they are today. Workers' compensation ebbs and flows. We've had some good years, we've had some not-so-good years. And so as those expenditures increase, you're, you'd be remiss to not have some sort of balance to fall back on if you missed your projections. As the district has grown over the 10 years with additions and new buildings, we're also required to ensure those, those assets, and so premiums would be, would go up as well. I can't really think of anything that costs less today than it did 10 years ago. And so, again, you know, thus the reason for an increase in the fund balance.
Thank you.
Gary also made a comment about not having a balanced budget. We have always balanced our budget, but we had to use the reserves to do that. So I just want that for clarification so some people don't understand it. It's not an ideal situation, but because of the stewardship of the funds that we had available, we were not deficit spending, we were not on the watch list, we were not, and in fact, we have loaned money to other districts so they can make payroll at the end of their, at the end of the school year. So we end up with a balanced budget, but it's not balancing it the way you would want to. You don't want to draw down on your savings to balance your budget, you want to live within your means. And because of the recession and all the things that happened between here and there, you know, we had, we had some rough years. And last year, we started climbing out of the hole, and this year, we're, we're head and shoulders in, sitting on the edge, correct? Or are we all the way out? All the way out of the hole?
Absolutely. I mean, if you look at Exhibit A, which to me is probably the most important exhibit-
Pretty simple.
-in, in the packet, you've got your beginning balances there. Again, these are all unaudited. We've not, we've not had our, all of our books finalized. There may be a few entries that lag in terms of, but it won't change dramatically. So you've got your beginning balances, you've got your revenues for the operating funds, the six operating funds, 259 million, and expenses at 259 million. So, you know, we're at $12,000 difference. I, I can't remember ever presenting that tight a budget to, to the district in my 15 years here, so.
So, and I just think, you know, people need to understand, we take, that's the one duty that the Board is really charged with in particular, but, you know, you don't get to, I'm not looking for a pat on the back, but I pat everybody else up here on the back because there's been, there's some pain that goes along with it, but getting done what you need to get done, and doing the right thing, and putting the resources in the classroom, working with our educators, coming up with, you know, what we think is fair working relationships and contracts, all those things that factor into it, taking care of the buildings that we have, maintaining our properties, all the little things that go into that. And the folks on the wings on both of these sides should- And the folks on the wings on both of these sides should get credit for some of that as well, because, no, they should get the lion's share, because they do a lot of work behind the scenes that goes unnoticed, but by the general public, but not certainly by myself. And I hope I can speak for the rest of the board members as well, so. So thank you for that. We have a motion, we have a second. And with that, if no further comments, a roll call would be in order.
Member Carlson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President Zach?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Moving down the agenda. Mobile classrooms.
Yep, second item, mobile classrooms and independence. We brought an information report to you at the previous board meeting. No additional information really to share, other than we are recommending approval of the purchase of the four mobile classrooms from Innovative Modular in the amount of 255,159 dollars.
Motion? Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Fairly well-vetted at the last meeting. Roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Carlson?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President Zach?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Let's see, certified, oh, wait, yep, certified, classified, and administrative personnel, Ms. Nash.
Thank you. This evening, Action Report 12.1. We have the consolidated action report for certified and classified personnel for your approval. This evening, we are seeking your approval on 67 items for certified personnel, 55 items for classified personnel, three items for classified administrative personnel, and one item for certified administrative personnel.
Motion? Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Carlson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President Zach?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Capital improvement projects. Come on down. Mr. Lopez.
Well, Mike makes his way up here. We just wanted to provide to the board and our communities an update on all of the goings-on here this, this summer that will continue into the, the new school year. We've had a very challenging construction summer, which I think is probably an understatement.
Yeah, thank you.
But we continue to persevere, push forward. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Yeah, so good evening, Board President, members of the board, senior leadership and Valley View community. I'd like to share with you a snapshot of projects that are included in our multi-year capital improvement program. With the issuance of bonds last year, a number of projects have been completed to date, while some are still in progress as we speak, and others are in the planning phase. The feasibility and planning stages of each of these projects involve school leadership, district administration, and the board finance committee. A number of these capital improvement projects were completed last year in 2018. If you recall, about this time last year, we were finalizing the library renovations or the collaborative labs at the two high schools. We're also completing projects such as the entrance at McGee, Romeoville High School main offices, and a number of other, both exterior and interior, projects. And the positive impact these projects and other projects is evident, I think, in the daily activity of students and staff in and around these spaces as we see today. Some of this past summer's projects included many of our phys ed and co-curricular areas. These received much-needed repairs and upgrades. The tennis courts were resurfaced and, and were completed at Bolingbroke High School and Romeoville High School. Brooks Middle School is in the process of being completed and will be ready by the end of August. Tracks were resurfaced at Bolingbroke High School, Brooks Middle School, Jane Adams, and Le Cansick. Romeoville High School has been resurfaced and is currently being striped, and we expect that to be complete within the next few days, weather permitting. Humphrey School will be completed by the end of this month, and that's being worked on in conjunction with the major site project that's happening there. The synthetic turf fields at Bolingbroke High School and Romeoville High School stadiums have exceeded their recommended play life as, as has been discussed in the past. These were installed about 12 years ago, 2007, and those were also replaced this summer. In addition to that, the Bolingbroke High School varsity ball fields have new turf infields being installed, and those are also scheduled to be complete this month, before the end of this month. All of these fields take advantage of latest technology in artificial field turf, and we expect those to last at least another decade or more going into the future. And if you haven't seen these, they're very impressive to see. They're, they're very vibrant, and, and I'm sure they'll, they'll create some, some very good sports play on these, for these different occasions. Along with these projects, repairs and improvements were made to the underground water and electric lines. So as part of this project, as they tore the old carpet off, a lot of work was done underground as well and exposed the sites, but we also made a lot of important repairs to, to the systems. One of the large site improvement projects this summer was to enlarge and replace the asphalt lots and sidewalks at Oakview Elementary School. This project allowed us to add much-needed parking spaces. We went from 87 to 115 parking spaces. We improved the parent drop-off traffic flow. We don't, no longer need to have cones placed everywhere and staff directing traffic. It's more, it's more fluid. We've also increased the onsite queuing for drop-off and pickup by extending the sidewalks towards the west of the property. And probably one of the biggest things we've done to improve the site safety is to align the, the entrance to the school to, with the, with the four-way intersection that's adjacent to that on Schmidt Road. Construction for this was completed last week, and final landscape is in progress. Probably the most extensive and challenging project completed this summer was at the Humphrey site. And if you go there now, you'll see the final landscaping, the, the seat and blanket being installed, but the site is completely functional. Actually, the, the new bus lane is complete, ready to be used. The parking lot was actually full this morning. It's all striped and ready to go. The remaining work is towards the back of the site, and that involves the finishing up, the landscaping and fencing for the, for the ball fields and the solar field in the back. So as you can imagine, weather was a major factor in this and many of the other site projects. This one actually got started in the spring. We tried to get a big jump on it, but May, if you've read the papers, was the most wettest May we've had on, on record in the last 147 years. So that had a huge impact to our ability to, to get started on these projects and actually complete them. We actually had 35 lost days of work as a result of rain for this project, and 22 for the ones that we got started during the summer. But they did get done. They all got completed, in part because we had a great partnership with our general contractor, was Abbey Paving, for both Humphrey Middle School and Oakview Elementary School. So they were able to get us ready and going for the start of the school year. This project also enabled us to separate the bus and car traffic. We reduced drop-off and pickup times as a result of that, or we reduced drop-off and pickup times. It also included relocating the softball field from the northeast corner, which was an area that retained a lot of water. We moved that to the back of the site, along with the other ball field and track, so that makes it a nice complex there for, for sporting events. And we're also in the process of installing a ground-mounted solar array that will generate electricity by early fall. That's a fairly large system. It's got about 900 panels being installed in the back, so it's equivalent to about one of the smaller roof projects that we've already done. There were another, a number of other capital improvement projects made to our schools this summer. Romeoville High School Gymnasium has had the old loud HVAC units. Many of you are familiar with that. We actually had to manually control those during big events such as graduation ceremonies. So we, that's been replaced with the new high-efficiency air handling units, and they're located in the mechanical penthouse and no longer hanging over on the, from the roof, from the roof trusses. We've also done other projects in conjunction with Nutrition Services. We've helped them install some serving line equipment. Freezers and coolers were replaced at Irene King, B.J. Ward, and Jonas Salk, and a lot of our electricians, plumbers, and HVAC techs did the final hookups for those equipment. We did a lot of painting throughout the district, both exterior and interior as well. At Martinez, the main entrance was, received a new entrance walk and knee walls. This was in large part to address some water ponding at the front area. So we ripped that all out, and besides the aesthetics to it, it has, it's a very functional entrance in that students can now sit along the knee wall and, and wait for their rides at the end of the day. Another big project was the tech center. That was remodeled to keep pace with the growing and changing needs of their department. As, as Astrid and her team know, there, there's always the, the need to have a lot of flexible spaces in her department, so her team can be collaborative amongst each other and, and benefit the district. So that was a pretty important project that we undertook last spring, or this last spring. And if you get out and travel to some of, some of our sites, you'll see that a number of them have received fresh steel coating and crack fill and striping in a lot of our parking lots as part of our ongoing maintenance. This picture shows a wood shop and classroom addition that's currently under construction at Romeoville High School. This project is scheduled, scheduled to be ready for the start of the second semester this school year, and it's currently on schedule and budget. This space is going to include, in addition, to house a new wood shop and carpentry building program, which was presented and discussed several months ago. The classrooms will support the growing enrollment at Romeoville High School. And we've also relocated the maintenance shop that's displaced, it's being displaced because we added some restrooms, and a much, much-needed restroom is that wing of the building.
That looks a lot different now, correct?
The addition?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, this, this was taken fairly recently, but every day, that, the brickwork is going up. So steel and brick are going up as we speak.
Or truss work, whatever.
Also, Romeoville, the new, a new baseball and softball field complex is under construction. This is also scheduled to be complete at a later date, spring of 2020 is the, is the completion date. So if you did look at that as well, these are fairly recent construction projects. We are, we have done a lot of earthwork and grating work, and the smaller buildings are starting to come out of the ground in terms of foundations and brickwork. As, as with the other projects, we had a lot of lost days due to rain. That's been a challenge, but because this has an extended construction schedule, we're able to, to catch up with that. Included in this project is a new varsity and JV softball fields, a new JV baseball field, and the varsity baseball field is being renovated as well. All of those fields will be getting new turf infield, similar to what we're doing at Bolingbroke High School. This complex also includes a central plaza with a concession building, a storage building, and, and a second-level viewing stand for all of the, all of the baseball fields. And we're currently working with the Village of Romeoville to develop an intergovernmental agreement for, to benefit both the school district and the community. This is going to be a, a well-used complex for both, not just the district, but the community and tournaments as well. So we're very excited to see that happen over the next few years. Some of the projects that are currently in the planning phase, a couple of these you may have recognized, we talked about these last year, but we table them for year one because of the number of projects we were doing, and just also allows to get, have more time to plan for these. So that includes the Brooks Middle School gym flooring and bleachers. The flooring and bleachers are over 40 years old, so obviously, they're in need of replacement. New flooring options are being considered currently with the principal, and along with the modern accessible bleachers, they'll provide a much-needed activity space for the school. Along with that, we're looking at, in the planning phase, two high school fieldhouse floors. Those have been worn down. These are older pictures, but they're pretty worn right now through all the years of activity, and both are in need of replacement. Both schools are going to receive new athletic flooring system that will support their athletic and community usage for these venues. One of the larger projects that are in planning right now is the mechanical plant at McGee Elementary School. This is one of our oldest systems in operation, and it does struggle to maintain consistent climate control. Just ask anybody at the school, they'll, they'll tell you, it's, it's, it's pretty erratic to temperature in that school throughout the day. The project will take a comprehensive look at replacement of the chiller plant, the boilers, and the air handling equipment. And that includes all of the air distribution in the hallways above ceilings. So that's going to make it really challenging to do this when kids aren't in session. We'll have to take the ceilings down and extensively replace the air distribution system in that building. But the end product will be a comfort for students and staff, as well as providing significant energy savings to our district. We, we anticipate construction for this taking place next year as well.
You make any questions, Michael?
So just, just to wrap it up, in addition to these projects, we've identified a bunch of other projects. These are, include roofs, sites, fire alarms, and energy-related systems. And it's our intent to bring each and every one of these to the, to the board as the schedules and construction costs are developed. Thank you. Be glad to answer any questions.
I don't have a question or a comment. Many of us have traveled throughout the summer, watching all the sites happening and what's going on, how far advanced they are. Totally impressed that last week, Oakview and Humphrey didn't even have asphalt down, and now they're ready and striped and ready to go. So everything looks great that I've seen, and so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a little scary at the end here with all the, with the rain that just wouldn't stop. But again, with the, with having a good team and partnership with our contractors, it was, it, it all came together.
I have a, a concern with, we had some renovations in the front of Romeoville High School, and at nighttime, it's very dark in front of Romeoville High School, and you can't even tell it's a school. So can you take a look at that? Go past at, on 53. Go past and, and see what you think. You could see the flag, I think.
Yeah, we can...
But you can't tell, you can't even really tell it's a school. So if we could get some lighting on the front of that, that would be really nice. Because I know the letters aren't lit up anymore, so really, mostly, you can see the flag. So, yeah, if you could take a look at that, that would be awesome.
Sure. We, we did add some light, but we can certainly look at it. Now, there's the berm that's higher up there as well.
And the berms in the way, too. You can't see the school, so it, it's hard to tell it's a school.
It's got the big, beautiful sign up front, though, with, at the main entrance to, to let you know that they're there.
Um, let's see, and I'm, I still have a little bit of a concern. I know we won't really know until people start coming, but I can just foresee problems with parking. That's an awesome complex, the baseball softball complex, but I can foresee some parking issues. So maybe just keep that in your, back of your mind for, you know, when we start to have functions there to see how that's going to be, and if that's going to be an issue. We might need to look into that in the future.
Sure.
Any others, any comments?
Yes, I have one comment. For most of the time, I sit here and bust Mike's chops and stuff about trying to keep everything in budget. From a taxpayer's view, thank you for keeping everything close as you can, and for all the extra work you've done.
Thank you.
I don't say it too often, so.
And, and please convey our appreciation, and I know the guys from Abbey, you know, they were working over the weekend, and there's a lot of stuff going on, and this weather's just been unbelievable. And it's something you just can't do in the rain, and that's one of them, so.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have IT, correct?
Sorry, Mr. Quigley. I just wanted to reference just a couple of things as I sit here, listening to all of the action reports and information reports. I just wanted to say it's very humbling in my last year to recognize that all the departments are basically clicking on all cylinders, from the, from Gary's department having a balanced budget without having to go into our reserves, from, from Mike Lopez managing all of these projects efficiently with, with such bad weather and staying it within budget, from Rachel's area and curriculum instruction, all of the initiatives that are clearly having the positive impact on student growth and achievement, from perception data, public perception data about the worth of this, of this district's teachers and staff and board. It's just very humbling, and I wanted to thank everyone for the work that they do, and feel like it could not be a better best, a better last year.
Amen.
Thank you. Look at the signs down the front, and all the, the positive accolades that the district has gotten just recently. There's, you know... Pat your long arm on your back. So, and there's some people out there that are very responsible for it, too.
I wish I could, but if there's one thing I pride myself in, is surrounding myself with people who know more about what it is they do than I do. Makes no sense for me to put people in place that know less about something than I do, and, and all of these people clearly know much more than I do. And, and all I do is provide the support, along with the board, to allow them to make the, the appropriate decisions to further the mission of the district.
That's what good management is. Hire good people. Who's up?
Okay. So, and I'll, I'll introduce Astrid Welch. She's our executive director of technology. She's going to come on to the podium. Just as you saw from the capital improvement project overview, our maintenance department has just been working nonstop, as they do around the clock, around, you know, 365 days a year. Technology is another department that has just been relentless in offering support. Technology is another department that has just been relentless in offering support. And you're going to see from this presentation, it really is, it's the best of both worlds. It's a marriage. We look at technology as an accelerator. We keep focus on our kids and learning, and then we know our staff is our best resource, and then we put tools in their hands, and we do so as effectively as possible and efficiently and using our resources the best way possible. So Astrid Welch, Executive Director of Technology, is going to give you a great overview of how technology is really supporting all we do in Valley View for our kids.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Kinder. Dr. Mitchum, Distinguished Members of the Board, Senior Administration and Valley View Community. I have the privilege of giving you an update on the strategy work technology has been engaged in and supporting all the goals and strategies of our strategic plan. As Assistant Superintendent Kinder mentioned, technology is really an accelerator for our educators. And this is a quote that has become kind of a tagline for our department, in that technology really supports the educators and the important work that they do for our learners. Today's presentation, I'm going to give you an overview of all five goal areas, highlight some data specifically from Bright Bites. We have our standards that we see as our cornerstone to the work that we do embedded within the presentation, and then we'll spend some time focusing on five interrelated skills, tools, and topics that we will be highlighting, that will showcase the work that we are doing in partnership with all the strategy areas, and lastly, some takeaways. As I mentioned earlier, these five focus areas, multimedia, digital citizenship, communication, support, and professional development, are all interrelated into all five goals. As many of you have already seen, we've been utilizing the Bright Bites case survey for four years now. We've got four data points, and this really measures the integration of technology into teaching and learning. Over 8,500 school districts across the nation, so 2.4 million and a quarter of a million educators take this survey, and we've been doing so to give us three sets of data points. It shows how well we're on the maturity scale, moving from beginning through exemplary with our integration, gray through pink, yellow, green, and blue. And I remember President Quigley at one presentation said, "Green and blue are the best." So looking at the data points, those are the ones we're going to highlight today for you. So first of all, is another area of celebration that Dr. Mitchum mentioned, is that we have shown a 41-point growth in three years. Bright Bites tells us the average yearly growth is between four and 10 points a year. So we have grown over four years' worth of data in those three, four years' worth of growth in three years. So that's certainly an area of celebration that our partners in our classrooms, in our curriculum areas, can really celebrate this growth. And we're highly proficient in the work that we're doing at 1084, with 1,100 being advanced, and we have four of our schools that are already showing advanced proficiency in that integration. So as we talk about Goal One, our learners, the area that we've been focusing on is supporting our classrooms. And we can see here, we've had a massive growth of over 66 points, or over six years' worth of growth in three years. So kudos to our students and our educators in utilizing that technology in the work that they're doing every day. Some areas of real highlight here are the collaboration that our students are reporting to us, and the authentic problem-solving that they're using technology for, and the utilization of online assessments. So we're moving from emerging and proficient to advanced and proficient in our classroom metrics. We see an area of opportunity is the utilization of multimedia. Our students and educators are talking about the fact that they're very comfortable with creation of digital media, but they're not really leveraging it and utilizing it more authentically in the classroom. It will provide our students another voice that they can use to share content with each other, and our educators to share information with their students, reach out to families. So this is going to be an area of focus for us as we go forward this year. When we think about the learning environment and how technology supports this, our area of focus has really been on digital safety and digital citizenship. We can see a growth here in our educators and students' learning and proficiency of that digital citizenship, but we will, but what we would like to continue to see is how frequently those tools are being utilized. And we are partnering with our Student Services Team, our Curriculum Team, and our Building Administrators to increase the frequency with which students and staff talk about these topics. We are very proud of our relationship with our educators, particularly Building Technology Support Staff, and these are over 100 educators who receive a stipend from the Technology Department to assist us with piloting new technologies, engaging with their peer group on learning about new technologies, and they provide us feedback with that. And our staff members overall, let us know that the areas of celebration here is that they have exemplary access to technology, and that's the effective use of resources to ensure that they have the tools that they need. Our educators have great foundational and online skills. Their belief about the work that they do utilizing technology is exemplary. And again, we see some opportunities here with the multimedia and digital citizenship skills that we can assist them with and professionally developing them. This summer, over 400 educators participated in the 55 sessions of professional development that the technology team offered them, and we're excited to continue that this coming year. As a technology department, our focus on families is really about communication and building those partnerships. Our students tell us that they're very well-connected at home. They have great access to the internet. And over 7,600 families have activated their new student information system portal, and kudos to our buildings for working so hard this back-to-school, with over 3,200 accounts activated just that week with the back-to-school. Our students utilize their Chromebooks for school-related work very frequently, and they report to us that their families and our educators are their primary sources of advice about responsible internet usage and cellphone usage. So this is an area that we see is an area of opportunity in maybe reaching out to them, utilizing digital resources, that parent-family portal, and maybe a multimedia presentation on how they can continue the work that students are learning about digital citizenship at home. Effective use of resources, as has been mentioned several times this evening, is something that we're very focused on as a technology department. We know that access to technology has only come about by the administration and this Board of Education providing us the funding to do so, and our students and staff are telling us that they have exemplary access to that technology. So those dollars spent have really shown what's occurring in the classroom. And we see educators reporting that they have excellent access to those resources to do the important work that they do each day. We continue to look for grant funding ways, and the biggest amount of funding that we have available to us is our E-Rate funding by the federal government, and the district has really utilized those funds highly successfully. To date, we have utilized 94% of the funds available to us. We offer our students double the average bandwidth amongst other Luda districts, and we're doing that at 2/3 of the cost. And so that's certainly an area of celebration, and we'll continue to utilize those federal E-Rate grant funds as they become available to us. An area of opportunity that we continue as a technology team to focus on is the level of support that we're providing our students and staff. And we've seen growth here in the quality of support of our support model and computers that we provide our educators, and the speed with which we are moving forward is an area of focus. Last spring, when we received this increased data from our Bright Bites, we reorganized the operational side of our department so that we could increase the speed. We began with our elementary schools moving into middle, and this fall will be bringing our high schools into that new framework of support. So another one of those five areas that we'll be focusing on this year. So I just wanted to kind of close out the presentation here with another quote that links in, again, the work that our educators do with technology really is that accelerator to their achievement with our learners, and some real takeaways here. We are advanced in our proficiency of implementing technology into teaching and learning per the Bright Bites data, which is normed data across the nation. We can see that our educators and students have exemplary access, their skills are advanced, and we're proficient in classroom and environment metrics. We'll be focusing on five main areas with our partners, and those are multimedia, digital citizenship, increasing communication, and providing the support and professional development. I have some thank-yous. I particularly and especially like to thank the Technology Department team members there. They're the ones that make this happen every single day. There are three technology leaders in the audience here. I'd like to thank them, Alberto Diaz, Catherine Newman, Bud Brandt. I'd also like to thank our colleagues in the Admin Services Group, our Facilities Operations Team, our Finance Team, and our Print Shop. They all support the work that we do each and every day, as do our Curriculum Directors and our Building Leadership Teams. We really have partnered with them to push forward the strategies, and I would be remiss not to also thank and appreciate Dr. Mitchum and Senior Administration, Assistant Superintendent Rozoffi, Kinder, and Nash. They provide us direction, leadership, and support, as have you all with the funding. Would you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Great job. Thank you. You know how I feel about all this.
Thank you.
Several years ago, a handful of us embarked on a trip to California to see exactly the differences between Microsoft and Apple. And I'm a Matt, I'm an Apple guy, but we came back, and Astrid assured me we could do it sooner than what we thought we could do, and we could do it cheaper than what we probably thought we could do it. And we implemented one-on-one, two years in advance, and I think you'll see these, the numbers, not that they're lacking, but the ones that are lacking in the blue and the green, they'll get there next year, two years. I don't want to put you on the spot, but as soon as possible. And I think, you know, it's like, I think everybody up here supports all this, and I think the community understands that the kids communicate on these things all the time. I mean, you know, there it is. You could go to the moon on this in 1960 if you had one.
Absolutely.
But thank you so much. Now the bad news. Stay there. We had a data breach that you saw, maybe in the papers, you heard about it. Naperville had a data breach, Plainfield. Turns out, 13,000 school districts use a company called Ames Webhost, and some information was leaked out. We had, we're still kind of figuring it out. We do not currently use that company, but they held some of our information. It was relatively simple, emails and names for employees, which is public information anyway. And then we also had some students whose date of birth and names were released, but no emails from the students, no other access to files that we're aware of. We have contacted our legal counsel, who is also our insurance, we also have an insurance company that's working on this, and we are looking into it. We take that as serious as anything we do. We consider it personal security for the staff and students, and we will be, you'll be hearing more about this, I think, if you haven't heard it. There was an article in the paper today about some districts out west, I think in the Tribune, but we saw something in, I saw it last Thursday or whatever day it was, in the patch about Naperville. They had over 50,000 names of staff and students, whatever data that was released. So we're still getting to the bottom of it, but it is not an internal issue. It was with a company that we formerly used and some of this information that they kept on their servers. So their department, and we take this, we spend a lot of money on it, we take it very seriously, and those folks over there work really hard and really diligent to make sure that your employees and your, you know, students and families' information is kept safe and secure. So thank you, guys, for that, and I'm sure you'll be...
Thank you, President Quigley.
We'll get updates at some point, and once we have it, the community will be being informed before the end of the week. Gary, Jim, somebody?
Yes.
We'll get that information out. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Legal Services Report, what you all came for?
No report.
Association Report, AFT?
No report.
Valley View Council Report?
No report.
They're all getting ready for the first day of school. Valley View Office Personnel Council Report?
Same.
Any old business before the board?
I did want to mention, as a follow-up to the concerns and suggestions raised by the parent for advanced placement, in the board docs during, under the section "Old Business," there is a link to those questions and responses that's linked in there, and we will also make that available on our website. But if anyone's interested in seeing that now, if you look on the agenda for today's board meeting, you can click under Section 16.1 and find the link to those responses. And again, we're happy to continue the dialogue.
Any new business before the board? Any questions from the public on actions we have taken this evening? Hearing none, seeing none, moving down the agenda. Any announcements by the board? From my right?
Yes, I would just like to welcome all the staff and the students and the family and the community, and all, we just talked about all the collaboration and the partnership and how each one of us need each other, and we are a village, and so let's get out there and continue to do the work that God has caused us to do in the Village, Valley View School District, 365 U.
From my left?
Almost the same thing, Liz, so I just wanted to welcome everybody as well, and hope everybody has a great 2019, 2020. Have fun.
Thank you. You know, just to echo what Liz said and Sally, our partnerships are far beyond just what happens in our buildings. The communities that we serve, Romeoville and Bolingbrook, and I think we even have a few kids from Wood Ridge, but we value those relationships as much as anything. The working relationships we have with the Village, with the mayors, Mayor Noak, Mayor Claire, you can't underscore it, because we work with their police departments, the public works departments. Everybody adds into this, and that's what makes this community, and the Valley View community in particular, a really, really fantastic place to be. We were designated as the number one most diverse school district in the state of Illinois, including CPS, correct? Think about that, folks.
That's correct.
You live in the most diver, we always said we were, we put it up there in the top five for sure. Somebody did a study, and we found out we are in the number one diverse, and I think that's what makes these two communities one of the greatest places you could find to put down roots, raise your children, have a family, have a home, retire, and so on and forth. So I just want to thank our other partners who don't nearly show up in a meeting, but maybe they'll watch the video, and especially if we tell them that we gave them a plug. So thank you to our two communities that we work with. Any announcements by the administration? Button?
Member Gilbo, and Member Campbell, and President Quigley stole my thunder, but I just wanted to welcome the teachers and the students back this Wednesday to the first day of school. And I also just wanted to echo that, yes, we are the most diverse district in the state of Illinois, but that's not what makes us unique. It does make us unique, but what makes us even more unique is our capacity to be able to meet the needs of all of our learners, specifically with the diversity that we have in our district. I don't think anybody does it better than Valley View, and I just wanted to thank everyone for that.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchum. Any announcements by the public?
I'm sorry, President Quigley, I have one other. Of course, I would like to echo that. We are very excited to see all of our staff officially back today, even though most of them have been here a lot in the summer, and welcome our students back on Wednesday. We did begin the second phase of our ALIS training, which is a protocol for safety and security response if there's a threat in our buildings, and that's been presented to the board before. ALIS stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate, and it's part of our safety protocol to ensure that we're doing everything possible to keep our schools safe. Our Romeoville certified and class, I'm sorry, our Bolingbrook certified and classified staff were trained today in the second phase of their training. Romeoville certified and classified staff will be trained tomorrow. And then our other departments and partners as well, so transportation and maintenance, nutrition services, as well as many of our other partners in areas that serve our students will also be, also be trained, and it's something that we take very seriously, is the safety of our staff and our students, and so we just wanted to let you know that we're continuing in our efforts to ensure the safest learning environment possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any announcements by the public? Seeing none, hearing none. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So move.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Have a safe evening. Supposed to get some storms tonight. Hunker down. Hunker down.